Everyone have a seat. Have seven o'clock. Looks like we've got pretty much full house. I think we're only missing one, one of our commissioners. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Purpose of this meeting is to go over our agenda for next Monday night. We do have a few things that we have cropped up that we need to add. We did have a budget amendment, last minute budget amendment that was approved by Budget and Finance the last hour. It is Budget Amendment 101, 3 F B, $435. The state legislature did an increase to agricultural salaries and we were not aware of it at budget time and they made it retroactive. This will cover the needed funds in their budget to go forward. That's only $435 for the total year, but it will be a fund balance draw. So we'd like to add that in your budget amendments as the third budget amendment, total $435. Also, we do have a a form, a request, I guess you'd say, from T Dot for right of entry on the property 201 Broadway. The mayor would like our approval to execute this document. So we will pick that up under other business, item 12, other business will be T Dot right of entry. We can explain a little bit more at that time. This is their paperwork requirements. I believe that was all the additions. Do we have anything else, Amy? Mayor, was there anything else that I missed?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Right. Next Monday night, of course, will be our existing commission. First off, we will have our invocation, Mr. Whitaker. Good with that? And pledge the American flag, Mr. Johnson? Would you lead us in the pledge next Monday night? Thank you, sir. And we'll have our roll call by electronic check-in. The minutes have been distributed. If you have any questions, additions, deletions, please let us know. And so we can have those corrected prior to our meeting if possible. Announcements. Have one announcement and it's hard to find the words to express to Commissioner Baker on the loss of her son. And just want you to know that you're in our hearts and we are with you and we appreciate you being here tonight. Are there any other announcements, Mayor? Did you have anything announcement wise?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, did y'all have any further announcements, anything coming up that want to make us aware of? The training is going on with the state. I know some of our Commissioners that are here tonight have made it back to be with us. I appreciate their efforts in that respect. I believe we had six of the new Commissioners go down. And Mayor, soon to be, McCall, was in attendance as well. Appreciate them. You will have other opportunities to avail yourself of that training at other meetings as well, I think, as online at a later date. But appreciate their efforts of going down. I hope it was worthwhile to them. The only amendments to the agenda are the ones that we, that I covered previously. If that's okay, we'll add those for Monday night. Seeing no objection. Okay. County Mayor's report, Mayor Chambers?
First item I have is I received an email, I was part of an email received earlier today from the Tennessee Corrections Institute regarding our county jail. It has been inspected in July and re-inspected in August, and we do have a finding for overcrowding that is requiring us to submit a plan of action going forward. If we do not submit this plan of action, we will not be able to house inmates. So we have to have this plan submitted to TCI for their board to consider and approve it by September 1st. I've already reached out to the Sheriff's Office. We're already in, working on that. We've had contact with TCI, the Director Wall, about kind of what they would like to see in the plan. Us having the County Corrections Partnership Committee, quite frankly, I think is going to save us on this. If we didn't have it, they would, we would be required to create one, but since we have it, we're going to go back, update them on its creation, what it's done, the steps we've taken as far as planning a new facility, and then kind of update them on where we see it going in the future. So that's where we stand with that. We are working to get that done, and I think a big step to go towards that would be tonight, you have, we're next week. You have approval for a contract with Spirit Architecture to go forward on designing the facility. I think at this point it's crucial, and I'm going to highly recommend that you approve that so we can include that on our plan of action to show that we are taking concrete steps to move forward and get this new facility in place to address our issues. But I just wanted to let you know about that, and I can answer any questions as far as I understand it. But like I said, we just got this communication sometime a little after lunch today.
Thank you for updates on this. I think many of us that have been working with this project have, I hate to use the term expected this, but certainly aren't surprised that this was, was going to happen. It's very much something that we need to move forward with. I agree 100% with that.
If I could just make one more statement, I want to let everyone know they did not find deficiencies with the facility itself. They are happy with the condition of it, though they do say, given the age and the security things, it probably won't meet standards going forward. However, at this time, they did not give us findings on that. It was strictly for the overcrowding situation. So they're pleased with that. They do want us to, even before this came up, they really wanted us to look at a new facility, given the age and the issues we've had with it. But I did want to let, there's been some questions on that past, and I just wanted to make it clear that there was not findings requiring action on that front. It was strictly for the overcrowding.
Thank you, sir. Committee reports, Parks and Rec met August 16th. If you'd be ready to give us an update on that, Mr. Gregory. And Budget and Finance met tonight. All of the budgetary items were approved and sent forward to the full body by Budget and Finance Committee. We did look over the year end figures and ended the year on a, on a strong note, and everything came in about as expected. Didn't have anything of any great, anything that was anomalous, other than some revenues that came in a little bit stronger than anticipated. Expenditures seemed to be right as budgeted, so very glad to report the year of the year end figures looked real good for us. Were there any other committees that met or will meet prior to next Monday night's meeting?
The only thing that's going to meet before the meeting is the Highway Commission, but it doesn't give her the reports.
We never get a report.
The only thing that met other than that was just the Professional Services Selection Committee, and we've got items on that to discuss
Right.
for that resolution, but to my knowledge, I don't remember any other committees meeting.
Something comes up, let us know, please. Get into our active business. First is Resolution 2022-21-765. This is to authorize signing of contract. Mayor, would you like to explain that one, please?
Yes, sir. As part of moving towards a new Justice Center Jail, whatever it ends up being, we have to hire an architectural firm to help us with this. We did put out an RFQs. We got five submissions to the Professional Services Selection Committee. We did go to facilities of each of these around and like Justice Center Tours, myself, Sheriff Russell, County Chairman, Mr. Jewell, Shane Burton, Jail Administrator, Josh Scruggs, and some others went and looked at these facilities and talked to the locals and the architect firms. There's, we're going through those, use those for evaluations. The firm that was picked was Spirit Architecture. As soon as they were picked, we moved into contract negotiations with them. So this group, along with Mr. Beller, sat down with him, went over a contract, made some changes to it. And then that's what we're proposing here tonight, is to get that approved next Monday night so we can move forward with planning the facility. And as I said earlier, I think we really need to get this in place as part of our plan of action to TCI. But they're going to come in and help us, they'll do several meetings, help it get feedback from the Corrections, the County Corrections Partnership Committee, other Commissioners, stakeholders and whatnot, as they define, design the facility. They're going to help us evaluate a site and work with other consultants to do soil bor, soil samples, borings, everything that needs to be done. So they're going to help us throughout the entire process, then also when it comes forward to putting requests, proposals together for a, a contractor to come in and help build the facility. So it's, it's pretty in-depth services that they're going to offer, and Mr. Langford from Spirit Architecture is here. If you have any other further questions on that, but that's kind of in a nutshell what this, this contract is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Langford is with us tonight. Appreciate him being here. He came tonight just in case there were any questions that he could help us with, answer. This resolution also covers the TDEC Parks Grant and the Design Services for Trade Park as well. You want to touch on those, sir?
Yes, sir. We did get the contract from the state for the local Parks and Recreation Fund grant that did go to the Parks and Recreation Committee, and they did vote to recommend passage to the County Commission. So this is the 600,000. The contract itself is pretty standard form, given to the, from the state whenever you deal with their contracts. So there's no real changes towards, to that. Like I said, it is 600,000. The other item was for Kimley Horn, and that would be a consultant firm to help us come in and design the improvements to Trade Park. That is requirement. We have to have that, and TDEC want to just get them on board as soon as we can. So when we do sign the contract and it has an effective date of September 15th, they wanted us to have those services in place. So as soon as the contract period starts, we can go into the design phase and hit the ground running. So I would ask if the Commission could approve both of those, sign, authorize me to sign both the contract to accept the local Parks and Recreation Fund grant for the 600,000 as well as retaining Kimley Horn for the design services.
This resolution covers all three of those. We've had extensive discussions on this in times past. This is just spreading on the minutes, given the mayor authorization to, to sign these documents. Mr. Ford?
I don't mean to sound negative, but I've never seen any kind of a major building project go forth without some understanding how you're going to pay for it. I know you've got to go through these preliminary things. There again, I'd like to know the other part. I know I wouldn't be going out here and building a building if I didn't know how I was going to pay for it. And as a member of this court, I've asked several times and I still haven't been given any kind of an answer, how we're going to pay for it. I still want to know, but I think sometimes in a situation like this, we may be getting the cart in front of the horse. Just comment.
Well, the architectural services are going to help you look at the facility, determine what the size is going to be, and help you come up with a cost of it. And then they will help you figure out what that's going to be. Now, going forward, USDA Rural Development has already contacted my office about trying to get some kind of loans or grants in place. There are other grants like the Mental Health Facility Grant, which another thing you're going to vote on later tonight could help in that facility, help with that. The Mental Health and Substance Abuse Grant, if we already have that program in place, that'll help us score very well for getting mental health grants to put space inside this facility. So there are opportunities out there to fund some of this. And also there's going to be some, some choices that this Commission is going to have to make as you go forward as regard to, are, do you look at a wheel tax? We've got 300,000 annually coming in from Core Civic that I specifically got to help pay for that. So as we get this design services on, on, hired on, that should take not one single penny of taxpayer money. That'll come from that Core Civic funds, and that's $300,000 every year. Right now, we've got $600,000 in place. So there are some funding mechanisms there to pay for it. What that amount is right now, that's why we need the architect firm to come in and help us get those numbers in place.
Did that answer your question or help you? Okay. It's one of those things that you know, it's kind of like in the Bible, the begats, you know, you have to take it in projection or you got to do this before you can get the answer to that. And I think that's where we're at with this. We can't get the answers until we entertain a firm to help us get those answers. And that's all we're doing here. We're not building anything. We've not decided for sure, but they will help us in site selection and design and cost estimates, and that's what everybody wants to know. The questions I keep getting is how much and where, and I can't answer those at this point yet. The next step is to, like the mayor's explained, get someone on board to help us with those things, and that's what this resolution does. And certainly if you have more specific questions for Mr. Langford, I hope you will avail yourself of the opportunity to speak with him. I think, like I said, appreciate him being here, but I'm sure he's not going to be in any rush to go out the door if you have like to stay and talk with him a little bit more personally later. Okay? Any other questions on this one? That's what this resolution does. It's basically given the authorization to sign these contracts. Ordinances, we have several on first reading. All of them are concerning rezonies. First one is 254 2022-24. This is rezoning A1 to R1 down on Belcher Lane. This is two tracks that are zoned. A1, if they'd like to take to R1, I believe it's their intention to cut off an acre track to build a home for the owner's mother, is my understanding of this situation. Any questions on that one? This is pretty much a residential area down there. It has been previously subdivided into mostly five acre tracks. Mr. Gully, you have a question?
We are looking at two five acre tracks is what we're actually approving right now. Nothing to do with the acre, correct?
I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
We are looking at two five acre tracks right now that have been put in front of us, not
Yes, that's correct.
Not anything else, correct?
Right. To rezone these two five acre tracks to R1.
You mentioned something about the mother. I see that piece in the top there, but it did. Just making sure, we're just rezoning the two five acre, the 10 acre track into two fives, correct?
They, yes, they'd have to be rezoned. The zoning would have to be in place before they could present a site plan for approval. The map, if you, if you take this and go to the Property Assessors map and click on the LIDAR data that shows actual photograph of what's there. On the track, I believe it's 2401 or the 2402 that are directly to the north of these two is where there's a home. There is also a shop building down toward the river. I think they're wanting to put this house because of the septic field somewhere up toward the, to the roadway, is my understanding. There's also a house next door on 2405 that is Ms. McCowan's home, Jolene McCowan. And there are some others that have been developed a little further down, but like I say, this is basically turned into a residential area of the county. Any other questions on that one? If you have more specific questions, please get with Sam or Ms. Rosely. They can help you with it, I'm sure. Did I, did I get that right, Mr. Noller, Ms. Baker? Okay, okay. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you can go and look at what was presented to Planning Commission if you want to. It's online as well. The next one is 255 2022-25. This is a rezoning R1 to R3. This is 6.195 acres on Western Avenue. This property is the old, basically walking track, the property north of the old Texas Boot factory property. We had looked at this some time back. There was a quest, a request at that time to rezone it to R3, which this body turned down and changed it from I1 Industrial to R1, which felt at that time was in keeping with the zoning in the other properties on Western Avenue and the established neighborhoods around there. I believe it was also stated at that time that we have rezoned quite a bit of property to R3 for multi-residential and just felt like there was no immediate plans for this. This one, I believe, came from planning and did not, was not recommended by the Planning Commission. It had an unfavorable recommendation, I think, basically for, for the reasons that I've stated. It is a large part of this in a floodplain, an AE, annual event floodplain. Actually, part of the proposed site plan has four, at least four of the buildings in the middle of the floodplain. So there's floodplain issues with it. There is the surrounding neighborhood issues, and I believe that was the basis for turning this down. If I'm not speaking out of term, Ms. Noller, does that sound correct? Thank you, sir. Any questions on that one? Be up to us to do it one way or the other. We, like I said, we have looked at this before and did not do it, and they're just requesting after a year, they can come back and ask that it be reviewed again. And I believe that's where we're at on this. Mr. Gully?
This is the old walking track area, correct?
Yes. Any questions? Okay. Move on. Ordnance 256 2022-26. This is rezoning a partial from A1 to R1. This is 60 acre track on Dalton Hall Road. You can see the map here. There are sections of R1 cut out of it. This is basically the backside of Mr. Louis Beasley's farm up on the Dalton Hall road. Any questions on that one? Have none, we'll move on. Next one is Ordnance 257 2022-27. This is to rezone a partial that is currently A1, R1, to bring the entirety of this partial into R1. This property is located on Highway 141 North. Just past Harris Branch Road. Property's on the right and the left. And this is taking it to, be taking it in its entirety to R1. This one did, I believe, receive a no? Yes? Is this one recommended? It is recommended, this one. No? Yes, it is. This one was recommended. I know that there was one or two that weren't. Okay. Any questions on that one? Everybody understand where it is? Take a look at it. This is to allow higher density residential. The next one is Ordnance 258 2022-28. This is taking partial from R3 to I1. This partial was previously I1. We rolled it back to R3 some months back. The owner at that time wished to develop some townhomes on this property. Subsequently have sold this property to the adjacent property owner, which is the old warehouse where color, color
Catalina King slash AmeriColor.
Okay, AmeriColor, basically. And they're wanting to add on to their building at the back, and they would need this to go back to I1 to be able to accomplish that. They have purchased the property. This is in behind the administration building, down the hill, behind food land. If you, if you can't get your bearings on it, the big square there that's got the 2,400 on it on the map is their existing building now. Mr. Ford? This one was not recommended by the Planning Commission. I think a lot of that had to do my understanding with the fact that we just changed it. We're tired of going back and forth on stuff. But I just, I may be misspeaking on that. Mayor, could, do you have any anything to add on this?
I think the discussion centered around whether it could still be done under a commercial zoning instead of industrial. I think that's what the conversation was. I may be having this one confused at another one, but I think there was that discussion about can they still do this in a commercial zone versus industrial because of some of the complaints that came in and Garrett Brothers came in because that was already zoned industrial. So I, again, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I think that's maybe what some of the discussion was centered on.
I think AmeriColor, for sure, that property is still zoned I1. And this would be basically joining it back in. They'd join these two properties together to accomplish what they're wanting to accomplish. It was I1, has been I1 for many, many, many years. And I don't think you could make the argument that they're not in a manufacturing facility with printing presses and things of that nature. Maybe you could. Maybe it'd be better classified as commercial. I don't know. But the request is to take it to I1 and like I say, it's been there before. It's up to this body to either put it back or leave it like it is. But it probably will derail their plans to expand their business. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. That's my understanding. Okay? All right, we can take this up to more depth. There again, if you have specific questions about it, get with Mr. Edwards or and I'm sure he can can help you with that.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Can we get some clarification from the Planning Committee on why it was not recommended?
I believe it's we
I didn't see it.
No, we had asked for that information to be included when it was sent over. But we do not have the minutes available is why it wasn't included in the packet. That's why I'm saying a little bit further information, get with Mr. Edwards.
Well, we have those
We do have, I mean, members here. Mr. Thomas, anything you could enlighten us on this, or would you feel comfortable doing that? So you think it did? Where did we get this information? Okay. We will get it straightened out between now and next Monday night. Mr. Ford?
It's surrounded by industrial, right?
Yes, there's several businesses, the concrete batching plant in front of it. Their warehousing facilities, there's a warehouse on this cutout corner that's a warehouse for food land. We've got the big water department building that abuts it, backs up to it up there on the hill as well, so don't think it's a reasonable accommodation, a reasonable request to take it back since they purchased the property to expand their business. But that's your decision. Okay? Moving on. Ordnance 250 20 22-20. This is an ordinance rezoning R2 to R3. This is two tracks located up on Stott Avenue and Morrison Street. This was recommended by Planning Commission on July the 11th, and we will hold a public hearing on it this month as well. Is that Um, is that? Am I, did I skip one? We got it all? Okay, that's on a second reading, is that correct? Yeah, okay, that's second reading. Okay. Uh, any questions on that one? We did have it last month. This is property that uh, um, Mr. Moreland owns, he's here tonight to answer any questions if you have any about what his intended use is uh, to develop some townhomes on this property. There again, uh, the higher classification and joining these together uh, give them a little bit more flexibility on actually citing uh, the homes on the property. Okay. All right. Next is ordinance two fifty-one uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, this is uh, the Piedmont Natural Gas contract that we enter into. This will be the second reading on that. Any questions on it? Anybody come up with anything? Okay. Uh, next is ordinance two fifty-two, twenty twenty-two twenty-two. Uh, this is the updating of the municipal offenses, uh, title eleven of the Hartsville uh, code, municipal code. It's our second reading on that one. Any questions on that one? Okay, next is ordinance two fifty-three, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Uh, this is an ordinance to replace existing personnel policies uh, for Hartsville, Trousville County Government. Uh, we had our first reading on this uh, July twenty-fifth. This will be the second reading on this. Any questions on that one? Okay, if not, we'll move into budget amendments. Uh, we have three budget amendments for your consideration. First is twenty twenty-three, one oh one uh, zero one R. This is animal shelter uh, reserves. This is moving ninety-five hundred dollars for them to purchase some kennel uh, in the existing building and some uh, portable kennels within the van uh, that they use to transport animals. They have this, this money in their reserve fund from donations. Uh, they have a balance in that fund of fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, after this ninety-five hundred dollars, they will have a balance of six thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. This is their monies, and this is their request as to how they'd like to spend it. This was sent forward and approved by the uh, animal shelter board uh, to use it this way. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next is uh, inmate medical. This is um, we received on the last day of the year in our payment from the state, uh, nineteen thousand sixty-three dollars that got because of the last minute getting it, went into the fund balance, and we need to take it back out and put it back into paying for this jail medical care. Um, so this is just to kind of clean up some bookkeeping, I guess you'd say. And this, it just, it'd come in a couple of days later, this wouldn't have been an issue, but it was just timing. Just timing, moving it from one budget to the next budget. Any questions on that one? Okay. Uh, next is uh, leave. I can find it here. What did I do with it? Budget amendment is uh, twenty twenty-three, one oh one, oh three F B. Uh, this is to amend the one oh one general service budget uh, to take four hundred thirty-five dollars from our fund balance and put into the uh, ag extension service. Uh, the state um, approved an increase of their uh, salaries and benefits. And there wasn't quite enough money uh, put in the budget. They did this at the last minute, made it retroactive, and of course, we need to uh, have to add a little bit of money to it. This, all three of these were approved by budget and finance last hour for your considerations. Any concern or questions on this one? Okay. And then next is um, request for ARPA spending approval. Uh, this is to um, fund an initiative by the mental health council for the mental health task force. You have a document here that explains what they're doing, what they're trying to do. Um, this is a uh, for two years, um, kind of a seed money situation to help them get this program started and off the ground. Um, certainly, we have a great need for this. This has been come up many times before, and uh, this is coming out of our ARPA funds uh, to help get this uh, initiative started. Any questions on this one? This was approved by budget and finance as well. Okay. I'm sure if you have any questions specifically about it, um, Mayor Chambers can help you with that. We do appreciate all the members of the, of the health council are here in the presentation you made to budget finance last hour, explained it very thoroughly. You might want to go back and look at the tape on that meeting if you have some questions about it. Um, notaries, we usually have some. We'll know Monday night. Um, we do have under other business, uh, this need just came up, I believe today, yesterday, last week.
It's came up a couple of weeks ago. Myself, I've been going back and forth with Department of Transportation to get some clarification, and also I needed to get an answer from Mr. Beller about whether this property was a covered or not, but uh, this is something that's been going on. I think originally the T dot reached out to me about March of last year on this, and then they kind of went silent, and we just now started hearing from them again. But uh, essentially what it is, is this building at two oh one Broadway shares a, a stone foundation with the Little Goose Creek Bridge. They need to repair that bridge, and they cannot access it with the building there, so they need to remove it. And we need to give them the right of entry to go on there, and they're going to inspect the building, make sure there's nothing in there that has caused a hazmat problem. And then eventually they are going to demolish it and do their project and repair the bridge. That's essentially it in a nutshell, and I can answer any questions, but basically T dot has said that they have to remove this building in order to repair the bridge.
Mr. Gully?
Um, Mayor Chambers, you, you stated that uh, they're going to look for any hazardous materials. I hadn't really thought that part when I read through this original agreement. It looked pretty cut and dried, but who would be at cost of those if something has to be of the demolition here and of the, if there is removal of hazardous materials?
And my understanding is the entire project cost is under the Department of Transportation. It does not cost Trousville County anything. It's totally a T dot project. That's if we sign the right of entry. Uh, I will say that that building does have a crumbling foundation, and T dot is worried about it falling down soon. If we fall down before they get this agreement from them, it's on us to cover it versus if we go ahead and get this signed and get it off to them, it becomes their project and they will do everything, and when they're done, we just get the property back. They're going to encumber it for a little while. They're going to get a construction easement, but when they're done, aside from a little bit, where they're going to build a retaining wall right next to the bridge, outside of that, it'll be county property and uh, I would strongly advise the county government to look forward to paving that area and make it a parking lot to expand parking for downtown because it is sorely needed.
Can you have that uh, answer for us by next uh, Monday night as to who would be at cost for sure? You said you thoroughly believed it would be under the.
No, it's the, it is T dot. It wants to be signed this right of entry, and they go on there, everything is under them.
That's your understanding, Mr. Beller?
Yes, sir.
What, what we're needing is basically the mayor wants us to give him authorization to sign this. Um, what happens going forward will be uh, determined at a later date, but they want to get in there and see what's there. They've got to crawl under the building and see what's there. And they don't want to get on our property without us telling them it's okay. That's basically all this is doing at this point. Okay? Um, let's see, where are we here? Any further questions on that one? Okay, um, public comments? Anyone in the public like to make a comment on anything? Okay. Uh, anything that we had on our agenda that you need to come to the microphone, sir, tell us who you are, what you want to talk to us about.
Those are good. I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I'm Alan Dixon. I'm one of the, I would be one of the, the developer for the six acre track that is proposed going from R one to R three. Um, wanted to just come here, just kind of wanted to feel people's thoughts. I know one of the concerns for that property, two main ones, one was it being in a flood zone. Um, and we, uh, Mr. Marcelino, he's the owner of the property, would be partnering up on, on the deal. Um, we talked quite a bit about that because it is currently R one. We had been told that um, it had been proposed to move to R three before. Um, the, the challenge that seems to be finding with keeping it R one is it is in a flood zone. And it, you know, you're going to incur a, quite a bit of cost to build anything really on that property, which seems to be, is going to be difficult to do building single families when you have to build up that much, you know, which is one of the reasons why we were thinking through the uh, R three, potentially putting some apartment, apartments on there, um, and we knew that was one of the concerns. Um, and also it being beside the old industrial building, kind of seemed like it would provide a good buffer there um, between the two, you know, instead of going from industrial to residential, you know, it kind of had that little bit of a transition. Um, I, I just wanted to see, is there any concerns or anything that would possibly make the, the council feel hey, I, I would like to see these addressed, or I just wanted to see if anybody had any, anything on that. Um, but again, the flooding issue is actually one of the reasons which pushed us to the R three as opposed to, to building single families.
Well, that's certainly not going to make the floodplain issue go away.
Yeah.
It's still a floodplain, whether it's R one or R three, and you're still going to have to build a certain level above that.
Yes, correct.
I, I don't know that I buy into that it's just as easy to build multi-residential up as it is single family, but either way, uh, it can be accomplished. It can be accomplished. But it's, it's a tedious subject in that with the floodplain regulations from the federal government and our floodplain insurance in the county, if we allow something to happen in a floodplain, documented A E floodplain, they can pull our subsidies on everyone in the county's floodplain insurance. So it is a very serious subject when you start dealing with properties in a floodplain. Uh, from, from a building standpoint, legality standpoint, and people's pocketbook standpoint. Not saying they can't be overcome, just saying I think that's a lot of a concern. And uh, it uh, I think everybody in here would like to see it utilized and developed to, you know, into something better than what it is, and that's a weed patch for the most part. Uh, but there are some, some concerns, I think, mainly because of the floodplain.
If, if that was able to be addressed, or let's just say we built it three foot outside of it. I mean, and again, this is just questions, you know, we're, we're throwing around if that could be addressed, is it something that the council would be open to, or you feel just pretty hesitant about moving forward with it?
You've made the request. We will look at the request. Um, certainly site plan issues and building permit issues are not the purvey of the commission. Uh, the overall look, impact of our community and concerns uh, with floodplain are, so um, the zoning has to preclude site plan review. We can't rezone something subject to you doing what you say you're going to do. So uh, I, I, I guess that would be an individual question for each one of the commissioners to to address in their mind, uh, when they make, make their decision to either rezone this property or not.
Thank you.
Mr. Gully?
Would the um, uh, planning commission and, and site plans in that part not um, take care of those issues that we're talking about here of building inside the floodplain or not, where they would allow or not allow inside those areas? Would they not be our buffer there? In other words, there, if we rezone, we're allowing the planning commission then are going to have that responsibility of saying, hey, you're not going to build inside this floodplain. That's just a question I'm trying to ask you in this case.
Absolutely. Yeah, the site plan review would cover those issues. The actual issuance of a building permit would also be subject to those issues. But to rezone it with the assurance that it's not an issue is erroneous. It is an issue. Now, whether it's a big enough issue to keep from doing it, that's your decisions, I guess, is my best explanation. Uh, that, you concur in that?
I think that's a very good answer.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And certainly if you have specific questions, you want to contact, talk with them, I'm sure they'd love to talk with you. Is there any other business before the commission? Yes, sir. Sure. I think you're a public.
I just wanted to um, make sure there wasn't a mix-up. Uh, when I was here on August seventh, you uh, for the rezoning from uh,
Please, please state your name, who you are, and what you're wanting to talk to us about, please, before.
Corey Herskowitz. I'm with AmeriColor and Catalog Kings. And uh, when I was here August seventh, I believe it was, said that it was a favorable approval to um, to recommend, and then tonight someone said that it was not, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir, that, we had that discussion. We're going to try to clarify that before Monday night to be sure.
Okay, if I can answer any.
We, we do feel like we've got conflicting information on that. We want to, well, we will get that clarified.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Uh, just want to cover what we will lastly, in our business, when we're uh, through next Monday night, um, we will have the oath of office for the newly elected uh, commissioners. Uh, I have asked, and he has graciously accepted to do this, uh, Judge Linville uh, will be here, and he's actually going to wear a robe and uh, do the swearing in, and he said he would not run out the door. And any of the new commissioners would like to get their picture made with him. Uh, he would certainly avail himself for that opportunity uh, for the paparazzi. And uh, appreciate him doing this. Uh, he's going to swear in the other elected officials that morning. Uh, Mayor McCall has already been sworn in. Uh, you will not officially take office until January first, but we do plan to have that swearing in September first, September first, next Monday night. So that's, that's kind of, I certainly hope that everyone would want to stay uh, for that and not just get up and storm out, uh, and we'll congratulate all our new commissioners at that time. Okay, is there anything else? Mayor, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Amy? Anyone, commissioners? Mr. Ford? I've not been asked to. No, sir, I don't know about that at this point. Mr. Walsh?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Get up and leave.